Good evening, Tuesday, November 17th, 2015. Meeting of the Board of Selectmen, the first item. services to reach this end of town. And as I mentioned, there's several problem spots that the neighbors have raised as concerns, the first one being the Pine Hill Road-Parmenter intersection, but it's also what we call the S curve around 78 Pine Hill Road, there was a significant curve in the roadway, if you're familiar with the road. There's been a number of accidents at that location, the straightaway on Pine Hill Road, which is probably the longest straight section of the roadway, and there it's really mostly about speed concerns that residents have raised. And then there's a small kind of hill rise in the roadway, you can't physically see over that, a lot of folks have been very concerned about head-on collisions at that location. So, just to kind of frame, to your point, some of the concern areas the residents have raised. I'm not going to read all these for you, and we do have a handout I want to leave with the selectmen, but a number of quotes that the neighbors have raised about concerns, and these are not my interpretation or Ginger's, these are directly from the residents in the area, and as you can see, again, I'm not going to paraphrase everything that's up there, but obviously, there's significant concerns that residents have raised. They're worried about their children, they're worried about, you know, trying to get out of their own driveways. One neighbor actually physically moved their driveway off of Pine Hill Road because they're concerned they safely retrieve their mail off the roadway. And if you're not aware, about two years ago, there was a fatal accident in Framingham, not far from our town border, on Edmunds Road, that is exactly the scenario that happened. A resident went out to get their mail, was hit by a motor vehicle, and was killed in that accident. Framingham, to their credit, has taken a lot of steps to resolve that problem in that stretch of the roadway, so I think it's also a parody issue that the neighbors ask the questions about, if neighboring towns are taking similar actions, why aren't we doing it on a similar type of road structure to that? And again, I'm not going to read you all these comments, because it can be long, but we'll leave that with the selectmen for tonight. So a couple of things about actions to date, and this is a credit to the town, the residents raised concern, I know a number of our colleagues and our neighbors in the area called the police department, called Public Works, called the selectmen's office, and to the credit, PD increased speed enforcement up there during the months of June and July, I think that was evident to the neighbors, we appreciate that. And the neighbors recognized we don't have a large police force, so we're not going to get a permanent police officer assigned up there to do traffic enforcement. To the credit of Public Works, the intersection of
Good evening, we're back in open session. I apologize for those that are here for the six thirty. Quiet, please. I apologize for those that are here for the 6:30 meeting, which is starting at 6:45. Our executive session went a bit longer than we had anticipated, as unfortunately, it tends to happen. The item on the agenda is the discussion relative to the Pine Hill Road-Parmenter Road intersection report. In terms of framing the discussion, just so that the presenters and the audience know, the board has and has reviewed the September 25, 2015 MDM Transportation Consultants Safety and Operations Evaluation for the location, which is 15 pages in length. And in terms of not, in terms of trying to move forward, I don't think it's necessary, unless someone disagrees, to digest the entire report in, word for word. But it's clear that the report indicates that the intersection experienced what is called a crash rate slightly above district-wide averages. And it came up with numerous recommendations with regards to the intersection. I am, and I believe this board is interested in hearing specifically the recommendations, not necessarily going through all the traffic data that the report does go through, that's pretty much objective information. I assume there's probably intersection accidents that have occurred at that location that are not necessarily recorded or registered, and we don't want to hear about that, because I'm sure that's the reality of every intersection in town. But why don't we just talk about ways that the consultants, the experts in this field feel, or believe, would be the best way to move forward at this intersection for the safety of the residents? That's kind of the focus where I want to go, as opposed to going through the whole historical background and going through the inter traffic reports and the analysis. Why don't we just get right to the meat of the issue, so that we move forward, rather than going backward? So with that said, welcome. Thank you for coming. Please introduce yourself. Whoever is going to speak, and I encourage anyone here to speak if they want to speak, you need to speak in the microphone, only because, not necessarily that we can't hear you, but because it's being recorded. So, the floor is yours, sir. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Rooney, and thank you, the rest of the board, for taking the time to meet with us. My name is John Tomney, I'm a resident of 105 Pine Hill Road, and joining me tonight is Ginger Ruddish, who's a resident of 99 Pine Hill Road. And what we're hoping to do tonight, as the chairman just outlined, is really kind of raise safety concerns of the residents in the Pine Hill Road, Parmenter Road, and the associated neighborhoods, have raised and seen over a number of years. We won't go through the whole historical context, but I think it's important to recognize the concerns are not just the intersection of Pine Hill Road and Parmenter Road, but it's the entirety of both roadways. And we'll just kind of give you a quick, a couple of highlight areas, and then talk about the report, some questions I think the residents have, and really understand what the towns, you know, intended path down forward, to hopefully make this a safer area for everybody. Just one thing, as a quick side note, we do have two petitions that we've put in front of the board with nearly 50 signatures from residents in the area, and they're addressing those two specific items. One is the intersection of Pine Hill Road, as everybody's aware, there was a significant accident back in mid-June, where there was bodily injury involved, there was a significant fire and crash involved in that. I think that raised a lot of concerns in the eyes of the residents, saying it's not the first time an accident's happened there, but it raised some serious questions about, is there going to be a more serious accident that's going to happen at this intersection, because of the current layout of the roadway itself? The second petition is really what I just outlined, which is really the entirety of the roadway, the speed on the roadway, the narrowness of the roadway, traffic has increased on the roadway over the last number of years, and it's really addressing a range of concerns. So I think it's important to point out to the board, we're not just concerned about the one intersection, there are other kind of choke points, concern areas along the roadways, that we want to make sure are looked at. So let me just kind of quickly run down through this. So a few items that are here, obviously, these are kind of country now roads, many of them are roads that, you know, probably evolved as the town kind of evolved, so they're not probably what a typical, typical, excuse me, typical roadway would look like if we were to build it today. Cars are definitely traveling too fast on these roadways. A number of residents, I'm sure there's other reports the police can give about traffic data, and fines and such that have been issued in the area, but the simple reality is that cars are moving very, very fast on this roadway, well above the posted speed limits. The volume has increased, it's clearly a cut-through area for commuters. There's a lot of concerns for pedestrians, bicyclists, it's not just about the road traffic itself, but it's kind of all of those compounding factors together. Commercial vehicle traffic is considerable on the road, back about 15 years ago, residents in the area attempted to look at a truck exclusion on the roadway because of cut-through traffic from FedEx and other delivery companies. That's only continued to increase in more recent years. The chairman mentioned accidents, we've gone back and requested through Freedom of Information Act requests, for the last 12 years of data, there's been 72 accidents on these two roadways over the course of the last 12 years, so it's a significant number of accidents. Again, I'm not going to pretend that we know an analysis compared to every other roadway in town, but that seems like a significant amount of accidents in the area. And this part of town, by the way, is significantly outside the response district of the rest of the community. As full disclosure, I'm a member, as a call member of the fire department in town, I've personally responded to a number of these accidents myself. It can be a significant amount of time under the best-of-traffic conditions for emergency services to reach this end of town. And as I mentioned, there's several problem spots that the neighbors have raised as concerns. The first one being the Pine Hill Road-Parmenter intersection, but it's also what we call the S curve around 78 Pine Hill Road, there was a significant curve in the roadway, if you're familiar with the road. There's been a number of accidents at that location. The straightaway on Pine Hill Road, which is probably the longest straight section of the roadway, and there, it's really mostly about speed concerns that residents have raised. And then there's a small kind of hill rise in the roadway, you can't physically see over that, a lot of folks have been very concerned about head-on collisions at that location. So, just to kind of frame, to your point, some of the concern areas the residents have raised. I'm not going to read all these for you, and we do have a handout I want to leave with the selectmen, but a number of quotes that the neighbors have raised about concerns, and these are not my interpretation or Ginger's, these are directly from the residents in the area, and as you can see, again, I'm not going to paraphrase everything that's up there, but obviously, there's significant concerns that residents have raised. They're worried about their children, they're worried about, you know, trying to get out of their own driveways. One neighbor actually physically moved their driveway off of Pine Hill Road because they're concerned they safely retrieve their mail off the roadway. And if you're not aware, about two years ago, there was a fatal accident in Framingham, not far from our town border, on Edmonds Road, that is exactly the scenario that happened. A resident went out to get their mail, was hit by a motor vehicle, and was killed in that accident. Framingham, to their credit, has taken a lot of steps to resolve that problem on that stretch of the roadway, so I think it's also a parody issue that the neighbors ask the questions about, if neighboring towns are taking similar actions, why aren't we doing it on a similar type of road structure to that? And again, I'm not going to read you all these comments, because it can be long, but we'll leave that with the selectmen for tonight. So a couple of things about actions to date, and this is a credit to the town, the residents raised concern, I know a number of our colleagues and our neighbors in the area called the police department, called Public Works, called the selectmen's office, and to the credit, PD increased speed enforcement up there during the months of June and July, I think that was evident to the neighbors, we appreciate that. And the neighbors recognized, we don't have a large police force, so we're not going to get a permanent police officer assigned up there to do traffic enforcement. To the credit of Public Works, the intersection evaluation study was conducted over the summer, I think there's some very good recommendations in there, and we'll come back to that in just a minute. We mentioned about the accident data that we've taken, and the neighbors have already commented on seeing some of the recommendations already being implemented. The lines were painted on the roadway a couple of weeks ago, there's been actions taken for signage being put up, things along those lines. One thing that we did do is that we petitioned, as I mentioned, to the board, but we also conducted a survey of the residents in the neighborhood, there's a pretty active dialogue between the neighbors that live in this area, so we actually conducted our own survey. Out of that survey, 100% of the respondents feel there are safety issues, not a single respondent said, no, I think the roads are fine, I think this issue is overblown than where it is, I think there's a universal feeling that there's safety concerns up there. Now, not everybody agrees on every action, and that's okay, but it's important to point out that our survey, and again, it's nearly 50 residents that responded to this survey, have indicated they feel there's significant safety concerns on the roads. In relation to the report that was conducted and commissioned by the Public Works Department, what you're looking at is the percentages of data that come back from our survey, we actually took all of those recommended actions put out by the engineers, and put it in front of the neighbors, and asked their opinion on what they feel about these various suggested improvement aspects. And as you can see, there's very strong support for many of them up there. The removal of the trees and vegetation blocking the signs was the highest, one at 81.6% of the residents that responded to it, and they range all the way down to regrading the roadway about 30-some-odd percent. So you can see, there's good support in the neighborhood, I don't think you want to go into this thinking that the neighbors are opposed to the actions the town's trying to put forward, but we want to make sure that kind of our voice is heard on some of the recommendations and the sequencing of some of those issues. Some other successful strategies of actions that have been taken in neighboring towns, I mentioned Edmonds Road a few minutes ago, New York Avenue also similarly in Framingham, it's a heavy commercial area, also had an accident involving a fatality, and another one involving significant bodily injury, took extensive measures along that roadway on New York Avenue to address traffic and pedestrian safety concerns, and also as a way of calming the traffic speed issues. Many residents have commented about the steps that the city of Marlboro has taken at intersections, and four-way stops, and high-visibility intersections, stop signs and signals that have been installed over the last number of years. And even in our own road, excuse me, in our own town, Parkerville Road, you know, some of the speed enforcement capabilities are there, between flashing road signs, speed humps, and things along those lines. So, again, I think the question that a lot of the residents have raised is, we've seen a lot of actions taken in neighboring towns, and also in our own town, to address, you know, traffic concerns, and I think they're just looking for, what's the kind of plan going forward for this area of town as well? So just a couple of other things that we'll put up there, and then we can open it up to the chairman's kind of dialogue on this, is, you know, what other actions did people as residents that live in the area raise from a safety concern? I think one thing that's important to point out, you know, the residents live in this area, we see the traffic and the issues 24 hours a day, I think for most other people, it's kind of a, occasionally, you come through and you maybe get a snapshot in time, and even in fairness to the traffic engineering report, it's a snapshot in time of the situation. So, what things that neighbors, again, these are suggestions put out by various neighbors, I'm not going to say any ones weighted more or less than the other, is to reduce the speed limits on the roadway, as a way, as a traffic calming measures, to paint yellow lines to give people better visibility. One of the big concerns raised by a lot of neighbors is the amount of traffic that crosses over the center line of the roadway, either intentionally or unintentionally, by various motorists, that raise significant concerns about head-on or direct collision situations. Many neighbors can tell you, and I've personally been in this situation myself on a number of occasions, vehicles physically passing us on Pine Hill Road. The operators are so impatient, based on the speed that we're doing on the roadways, they physically go around you on a road that's very narrow, very curvy, and it's dangerous, and there's real concern that that's going to be an issue.
Two of the recommendations, one was to paint a center line along Parmington Road, another was to paint a yellow center line along the last 100 feet, 50 feet of Pine Hill Road approaching Parmenter. So obviously, you're in favor of that, but you believe there should be an entire, okay.
Should be more, yes. Yeah, just to be clear, that's exactly what it is. There's been suggestions about looking at things like speed humps and speed tables, and again, I think there's variation on what people think about that issue, so I don't, again, want to give an impression one way or the other. More speed limit signage, right now on Pine Hill Road, there's a speed limit sign going one direction northbound, and one going southbound, basically near the beginnings of both roadways. And then for two miles, there's no other indication of the speed on the road.
Can I interrupt you?
Sure.
Again, it's not in an effort just to interrupt you for the sake of interrupting, but this slide, to me, seems to be what I would consider, and correct me if I'm wrong, the wish list, if you would?
Yeah, I think there are suggestions that the residents are putting forward.
Does it make sense to keep this up on the screen, and for then, us then, to hear from the public safety officials and the expert to talk about them, to engage in a dialogue, to see which ones are viable and which ones are not viable? Because, does that make sense to you?
Sure, but what I might suggest, Mr. Chairman, is that we can just finish through the presentation, and then switch to that if you want.
Okay, I thought this would have been the last slide.
Yeah, we're pretty close, there's only a little bit left. So again, I won't read through the whole list for you, but there's a lot of different suggestions that the residents have come up with, like everything from regrading the roadway, and again, a lot of these are in concert with other actions that have been suggested in the actual traffic evaluation report that was conducted by Public Works. I'm going to skip over the other survey comments that were on here, but again, these are, they're various anecdotal comments from various neighbors in the area. So I think the thing that, you know, we want to kind of wrap up the presentation on is this. So again, commending the town for undertaking the traffic evaluation study of the intersection, but I think there was some significant questions raised by the neighbors. And again, this is where I think it'll be a good opportunity to hear from our officials in the town, hear from the engineering folks that conducted the study, is stuff like traffic count information. It's kind of unclear to the residents when that data was compiled, for what period of time it was compiled. Was it done over the course of a week, a month, what time of the year? Our understanding, it was conducted during the month of July. As a resident of the area, I can tell you, traffic is significantly lighter up there at that time of the year, compared to this time of the year, is one data point. In the report, on the recommendation areas, there are statements in about judgments were applied, really various recommendations that were supported and desirable. Again, it's unclear to the residents, what do we mean by desirable or supported? You know, is there actual data supporting that, or were there certain guidelines attributed to it? It's just unclear to the residents, and we just want to understand the nature of what that is. One specifically pointed out is discussion about a three-way stop sign at the intersection, and again, nobody's pretending to be a traffic study engineer, but I think a lot of neighbors have raised a question, saying, we take all these other actions under advisement, and implement them, is it going to actually increase speeds on the roadway, are we going to increase the problem? A three-way stop sign seems, again, on the surface, is a simple solution, it's a lot less expensive to undertake. So was cost and timing considered in the various recommendation actions that have been written into the report? What other options are out there that maybe weren't listed, or why they were rejected if they weren't, you know, considered? That's fine, you know, as one example, some folks have said, maybe we should put a traffic light in up there. I don't personally support that, but I think it's a valid question to ask. There may be a very significant engineering reason why that's not being undertaken, traffic volume, other things, but again, that's not clear in the report to the residents. And then the last two points on here was the accident data. So the accident data in the report goes back three years, as I just indicated, we went back and compiled 12 years worth of data. I think it paints somewhat of a different picture. So again, the question is, why was the three-year window used for that information? And then the last question we'd ask is, could a similar study be commissioned for the rest of the Pine Hill Road and Parmenter Road areas? Because as I mentioned just a moment ago, there's significant concerns the residents have raised, not just about this specific intersection, but I think the entirety of the roadways. So with that, I'm going to turn over to my colleague Ginger, and just see if she's got some additional comments that you'd like to add.
Just one more, just one more comment about the wish list, Mr. Chairman, as you had indicated. I just want to be really clear that these are thoughts from individual residents, and it doesn't necessarily mean that the neighborhood has come to a collaborative effort on those, it's just the different suggestions that separate individuals have come up with. So it doesn't necessarily mean that it is a wish list, per se, but it are, they are the general ideas of the residents that live on the road.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Purple, I recommend we hear from the safety consultant to discuss his recommendations and how they differ with the proposals. Sir, would you mind? Can you just, they just take your seat here. Just, and just so you know, listen, you know what, we are a community, we are not trying to, the report was not written in such a way to get to a certain result, it was not written in such a way just to minimize the number of years of data. We obviously recognize the issue, we want it to come to a resolution. But at the same time, if you look at, if you look at this objectively, you look at a lot of intersections in town, and we have this continuing problem as well. So, we're trying to balance everything at the same time, and they did come up with some recommendations, and I'd like just to turn it over to the consultant to talk about the recommendations that they came up with, and then listen, and to Ms. Gallagher, and to the two public safety chiefs, and see where we go from there. Obviously, we could spend hours upon hours talking about Parmenter Road and Pine Hill Road, we're not going to. At least, we're not going to tonight, because we don't have that luxury, but at least we can begin the discussion. Yes, sir, could you please just identify yourself, and give us a, again, you were, may not have heard the beginning part of the presentation, where I indicated that all board members have reviewed the September 25, 2015 report. It is not our, it is not our desire to go through that report, item by item, data point by data point, but just to address moving forward, and the recommendations moving forward.
Okay, thank you, sir. For the record, Robert Micho, a principal with MDM Transportation Consultants, based in Marlboro.
Thank you.
You know, really, the objective of our study was to understand baseline what the conditions were at, and are at the intersection, based on field measurement, based on review of five years of locally collected police crash data for this location, the most current available information. And to, using that set of data and information, to identify appropriate measures that are based on engineering guidelines, standards, and engineering judgment. So, what we've suggested is a series of what we would call remedial measures, that would first and foremost, address the most salient issue at the intersection, which is one of limited sight distance. On your approach to the intersection, it's very difficult to perceive a vehicle on the approach to Pine Hill Road. Traveling east on Parmenter, you're limited by the vertical curvature of the roadway, as well as the presence of roadside trees, walls, grading, things of that nature. And likewise, on your approach from Framingham, coming downgrade, you're approaching from a curved portion of roadway, which itself limits your ability to see the intersection. On your approach to Parmenter from Pine Hill, it's not very clear that there's even a stop sign there, there's vegetative growth, it's not readily apparent, and obviously, it becomes apparent, because there's, the road ends. So, what we've identified is a series of recommendations that first and foremost addresses that issue of sight lines. We believe, you know, that by improving the sight visibility for vehicles that are attempting to travel onto Parmenter, or for those that are approaching the intersection, that that's the number one most important suggestion, that if implemented, would significantly address many of what we see as trends at the intersection, which principally have to do with visibility. Obviously, there are a series of other recommendations that relate to improved visibility to signs, the placement of a speed advisory zone with appropriate speed plaques along this stretch of road, and other features that would provide better positive control to motorists, higher visibility to traffic controls, and would encourage lower speeds that are more in line with what the actual available sight lines could be, if those remedial actions were undertaken. We were also specifically interested in looking at the idea of an always-stop control, and although there are instances where that form of control is appropriate, it is always based on a series of guidelines that are published by the, or in the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, MUTCD. There are a very specific set of criteria that an engineer or an implementing agency would need to consider before adopting that form of control. Stop signs are not to be taken lightly, nor is any form of regulated traffic control. If they're not placed in accordance with guidelines, or appropriately, they can lead to lack of conformance.
So, just, again, not to interrupt you, essentially, what you're saying, that the published regulations, the public guideline, and the professional standards do not support the installation of an always-stop control sign or signal at that location?
Based on the information that we've collected for safety, volume, speed, and given the conditions of the intersection, it is our opinion, based on the review of those criteria, under Chapter 2B of the most current MUTCD manual, that the criteria that would suggest the need, or appropriateness of stop control, are not met.
So your answer would be yes to my question?
Yes.
Okay, all right, continue on.
That was the legal answer.
Thank you, continue on, continue on.
Although, we did consider that, this intersection, you know, to meet those criteria, would first need to demonstrate a crash experience of five or more crashes a year, to justify that form of control. It would need to demonstrate balanced traffic volume.
I don't need you to go into that, I just, my question was, based upon what you know, and based upon what you understand the standards and regulations are, that those standards and regulations do not support the installation of an always-stop control at this location?
Correct.
Okay, let's continue on, so we can move it forward.
I know that there was reference to this study being taken at a point in time. We, in recognition of that, have consulted with the DOT database, they have a rather extensive database for traffic volumes on Pine Hill Road, as it turns out. They have years and years of data on Pine Hill Road that we looked at and compared to the volumes and information that we collected in July, and it is highly consistent. While there may be a perception that there's a spike in volume during certain hours of the day, or times of the year, the record evidence that's published by DOT does not support that finding. We find that there's a high level of consistency between the July 2015 data and data that was collected in either June or March, various dates going as far back as 1996.
Yeah, I don't think the biggest objection is regarding the veracity of the data, or what's included, or what isn't concluded, it's just the roadway conditions, unless, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, this is not going to be over the fight of whether or not you have the right data. The data is the data, and we just can move forward with that.
We agree, Mr. Chairman, we think that it's the confluence of the roadway plus the traffic.
Sure, sure. I don't think you need to spend much time about verifying the data in that.
Okay, so, it stands on its face, what we've published here is our professional recommendation of what would be appropriate here, it's been memorialized, it's been measured, it's been documented, and notwithstanding the concerns and issues that the neighbors have raised, this is one point of opinion, it's based on, you know, solid evidence, criteria, and judgment. And, you know, there's really nothing more that I need to add to that at this point.
Okay, okay, thank you. If we may, does anyone have any questions before I ask the next?
Not yet.
Okay. Chiefs, would you care to comment about your observations and your analysis, or your review of the report, or do you want to just keep moving forward?
Why don't you keep moving forward unless there's any specific questions?
Karen, you want to?
As far as the intersection work goes?
Yeah.
We, our plan at this point is to move forward with what the recommendations were.
Has anything been done yet?
Yes, we did the straight fifty intersection.
Why don't you explain to us what's been done?
Okay.
Take us through those.
We did the, about 250-foot center line at the intersection on all three approaches, and we put up the cautionary signs for the 25-mile speed limit, and that there's an intersection ahead sign. We've posted the trees that are on the west side of the intersection, southwest side, for a public hearing, which is next Monday, but actually, after looking at the, after looking at the percentages that the residents put up, it seems like most people do understand that that's a significant issue with the sight distance, so I'm assuming that the hearing would be fairly easy. If anyone does have any, you know, objections, they can also just email us, or you don't actually have to come to the hearing to tell us that, but...
This is, that's a significant point to me. What hearing is Monday?
The tree hearing is Monday at 6 o'clock.
Where is that going to be?
It's at the Senior Center, it's right before the Main Street meeting.
Are the trees in the public way, or are they on private property?
No, they're public way.
All right.
And then, I've actually had an engineering firm go out to survey the corner property for work with the stone wall, because the stone wall will have to go through the planning board process of a stone wall hearing, because that would be moving it.
And this, the recommendation in the report is to reduce the size of the stone wall, what's the existing size of the stone wall now?
It's not the height, it's to, it's to actually lower it, because it's on a banking, so to pull the banking down, lower the stone wall, and actually change the radius coming from eastbound on Pine, Parmenter, to turn onto Pine Hill, so that a bus can do it within its own lane versus crossing lanes.
Okay, so when I read, "stone wall removal and reset to a height of 2.5 feet."
Right, so you're taking down the banking and putting it to 1/2 feet down.
Got it. That's my non-engineering analysis, I didn't get to that point. Yes?
The stone wall on private property, or is it within the town easement?
It's, it's on, oh, sorry, I saw the hand over there, because Terry couldn't hear you. So the question was if the stone wall's on private property, it's actually on the property line, so it's still has to go through the public, and there would be a permanent easement on that property, I've talked to the property owner about it, so he knows what we're in process of doing at some point, because it would move onto his private property at some point.
Karen, are you aware of any objections to any of the measures that have been recommended by either your department, the chiefs, the public? by either your department, the chiefs, the public?
I am not aware of it in terms of that anybody's called and said, "We're totally against this." I know that I had heard that a lot of people did want to put the stop signs up and thought just the stop signs.
Not that it doesn't go too far. Any objections to what's been proposed as far as it goes?
No, no.
And sir, are you aware of any, and I don't want to anoint you as the spokesman for the entire neighborhood, but I'm going to.
Sounds like they did already.
I mean, are you aware of any objections to the existing, and this could be hopefully a yes or no answer. If it's not, I'm not asking.
No, we're not, we're not aware of any objections to that. I mean, there may be individual objections, but I'd say collectively from the neighborhood, there's no objections to what's in the report. Again, I think it's a question of sequencing, what recommendations have been put forward and why.
Okay.
If you have a question on sequencing, is it, is it whether or not stop signs should come first because the stop signs aren't recommended? So it's, we're doing it.
My question is limited to the recommendations that have been made.
Okay.
I assume sequencing is something you can discuss with them.
And let me just clarify one statement. And again, I don't want to speak for any one particular resident, but I think the resident that Ms. Galligan is referring to, there were some concerns raised by the resident that we've heard from. I don't know what's transpired since then. So again, but that might be between the resident and the town, so I don't want to kind of take a position for them on that. And that's specific around the stone wall concerns.
Yes. Can I ask a question? Figure six that was in the report, which shows the outline of Parmenter and Pine Hill. The notes on the page says, "Final design is subject to additional field survey by others." So are we, are we making decisions as far as cutting down trees, moving stone walls, and this design is not accurate?
The, the trees are in the sight distance no matter what, so those have to come down. The, the survey piece of it we're doing, and that's, the recommendation was this corner needs to be worked so that you have, so that when you look to left, you're not looking at a banking or a tree, you're actually seeing the road. And then the intersection recommendation they had was for the buses to make that corner. That, that's a design that they didn't, they didn't go into it. They said, "You just need to do this." So that's the survey piece. So the, the pieces that we've done and we've worked on don't need to have engineering design done.
So no surprises?
Not that I know of, or they wouldn't be a surprise.
I assume that implementing some or all of the recommendations that were made in the report don't preclude addressing some of the other issues in the future that have been raised as pertain to the roadways themselves outside sort of the intersection itself.
Unfortunately, I had not known about the, the other, the petition to get the work done until fairly recently, so I hadn't seen it. And it was outlined today what their questions are. We have several roads that are like this in town. It, if, I'm not 100% sure how to design, because it's, it's outside of what I can do, put it that way.
Yeah, I'm not, what I'm asking is not whether you agree or disagree, or whether we should or shouldn't do some of these other things. I'm just saying, if we do what's in the report, does that preclude us?
Oh, no, it does not.
From eventually doing some of these other things if we wanted to, decided to later?
Correct. No, it does not. Sorry, I didn't understand.
All right, no problem. It's my fault.
Any, any other questions, inquiries from the board?
Moving this forward, are there any items on this list that would require a warrant article to pay?
The, the permanent easement would, and that's why we're working on it now, is for the intersection.
Outside the easement?
Outside the easement, no, not, not a money issue, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Shea?
No.
Mr. Semino?
No, you know, we're going to obviously limit ourselves to the report tonight, but I've driven Pine Hill Road many times. I've, I've almost been hit in all three of the danger areas, the S curve, the hill at Angelica. It's an issue that needs to be addressed at some point soon.
So obviously, one of our goals all the time is to hopefully make sure everyone, when they leave here, they leave here satisfied and happy. I'm not sure that that's necessarily, in fact, I know that's not necessarily going to happen this evening. But I do want you all to take away the commitment of this board to stay on top of this, the commitment of this board to at least minimally implement the recommendations that are in this report. I don't know if this is something that can be done in baby step fashion insofar as, okay, let's get this done and see how, where we're at. I mean, if you, if you put yourself in our position for a moment, you have a report from an expert that designs and makes recommendations to us based upon existing standards and regulations, which obviously we're going to implement and follow. I understand there may be individual neighbor interests as well, which we obviously, we're not going to ignore, but at least for the time being, I think the first step is to make sure that this report, the recommendations of this report are implemented. And maybe I would recommend a follow-up at some point to see where we're at, both on the progress of the implementation of the recommendations and to see, check in with the neighbors to see how it's going. Beyond that, I'm not really sure what additional steps we can and we should take this evening.
I'd like to, no, not this evening, but I would like to instruct Mark and Karen maybe to get together with the chiefs and come back to us with regard to, you know, whether or what is possible with regard to, not necessarily Parmenter, but Pine Hill and some of the issues that are there. Because we, if we do have a tragedy, I won't want to be the one to say we never discussed it or tried.
And I.
I think that's what we're doing right now, we're discussing it.
Well, we're talking about the intersection tonight. We're not talking about the rest of Pine Hill Road.
And that's definitely something that's on the wish list of the residents and I think is echoed in that other petition that hadn't been circulated because we were focusing a lot on the intersection itself, but that there is that overwhelming feeling that, you know, it's kind of a disaster waiting to happen as far as the roadway is concerned. And even just having a commitment from the board to say that, in fact, that you'll look at Pine Hill Road and at least determine whether or not the, there are safety issues there and then come up with some kind of game plan for the future.
Yeah, I think it's our obligation not to just look at Pine Hill, but to keep an eye on the entire town to make sure that if there's any roadway issues, we are certainly going to be advised by our public safety facilities and our, and our DPW. So you have the commitment, absolute commitment in that regard. And also, you don't need to, in every instance, when you have an issue in your neighborhood or if people have an issue in their neighborhood, you don't need to circulate and sign a petition to come before this board. You can come as an individual, you can come as a group of individuals. You don't think, please don't think you need to come with a formalized petition in order to bring an issue to our attention.
We appreciate that.
That's not the, the manner in which this board is going to operate, and it won't be, at least as long as I'm sitting here, to require a petition before we have a discussion.
Yes, sir. And again, I think we appreciate that, but I think we also wanted to make sure as the residents in the area that we make it clear to the town, this is not a couple of residents getting together. This is a significant number of the residents that live in the area that have been having extensive dialogues about this issue for the last several months, and in many cases, several years, you know, going back a long time. There's a lot of folks that live on these roads that have been in the area for 20, 25 years and, you know, can tell you from firsthand experience that they feel the situation's getting worse on these roads, not better. Just a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman, if you wouldn't mind. One, I think is on the, the engineering report on page 12. I can just draw to your attention, this is the question about the three-way intersection stop. In the engineering report, there's seven recommended steps or actions that are required in the MUCD guidelines to meet this requirement, four of which are not warranted under the report, but three of which are. And in the recommendations section of the report, and I think this is where one of the large questions from the residents rose, is after all of the other steps, the regrading of the roadway, the signage, the limiting of speed, so on and so forth, the engineers admit in the report that if those actions don't, you know, work to calm the traffic speed and safety concerns, then an always-stop is warranted or to be considered. And I think that raised a large question mark in the minds of, of the residents. And I think the residents would like to know, and knowing the engineers who hear Ms. Galligan, if we can maybe have a little more insight to understanding that, because I think when the gentleman got up to speak a few minutes ago, it made it sound like we failed on all aspects of the checklist, and that's not the case according to their own report.
Okay, so there was a question in there somewhere.
Yes. So the question, I think, is to understand from the engineers, why is the always-stop not a warranted action in addition to all the other actions that were listed?
So let me see if I can understand your question. Your question was, based upon what the content of the report says, that if all the other recommendations are not effective or fail, then consideration should be given to an all-stop warrant.
And in addition.
Let me just finish.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And, and the question therefore is, is that inconsistent with what was said this evening?
Correct. And I think it also, the question is, there's seven points outlined in the report on page 12, which they say four fail the test, as he indicated, kind of a litmus test, but three do actually in fact warrant a three-way stop.
That's a fair enough question. Could, could I ask the consultant just to address that? I'm just trying to drill down to your questions because your questions tend to, I was just trying to drill into the meat of your question.
Thank you.
Because I was trying to remove the narrative just a bit. Do you understand the question?
Yes. The criteria specifically call out justification based on traffic volume, crash experience, and to the extent higher speeds exist, there are other subcategories here that I won't go into. To the extent those are not met, always-stop is not warranted, period. And, and that's what I said. There are other, other criteria that reside in a section called option, and this has to do mainly with engineering judgment, and to some extent, of course, the data, the need to control left-turn conflicts. Left-turn conflicts, if they're not controlled or of a certain volume, may justify the need for stop control if other remedial actions are not possible. The need for traffic control to control pedestrian conflicts is another one of those subcriteria that doesn't exist here, all right? While we understand there's a bus stop, a head sign placed there, and there is from time to time pedestrian activity, it's not of the type and volume that would justify this option. And, and there are two other subcategories that are similar. So our statement was not intended to say, "Well, gee, maybe, maybe we really should." It was, we don't meet the criteria, period. And we suggest that certain remedial actions be conducted, which are in fact feasible and are being pursued, which would put this solidly in the, you know, you know, keeping the form of control as it is today. There may be instances in the future where volumes increase for some reason, you have more balanced volumes, there's a higher level of pedestrian activity because there's a land use that's developed on the other side of the intersection. There's a whole series of things that could happen that would suggest that maybe always-stop control could be met under those circumstances. We don't know. We don't have a crystal ball, but those could arise.
Yeah, I think it does. If I could just maybe bring up a point, it's not really a question to the engineers, and I appreciate the explanation of that. I think one of the questions the residents are also concerned about is about the question of pedestrian traffic. And again, according to the report, it was done by automatic traffic counting data and equipment to do that. There's a lot of residents that frankly don't want to use Pine Hill Road, one because there's not walkway sidewalks to use in the area, that will cut through neighbors' yards to avoid being on the roadways because they feel it's so dangerous. There's a state park on the other side of that intersection that many residents use on a regular basis, daily basis, walking dogs, jogging, bicycling, all that stuff. And there's real no access, and that's really the natural progress point from that intersection. So I just, I think it's in fairness to understand, there's a lot more pedestrian traffic in the area that may be undertaken, shown in the study. Because again, the study sounds like, and in fairness to the engineering firm, it wasn't done with human counting, it was done by an automated process.
Let me just interrupt you, and I'm sure it comes as no surprise that Southborough is not a sidewalk, sidewalk safe community to the extent that that is a designation. We have recently formed a new committee. They are now evaluating those roads in town that should be put on a priority list for sidewalk installation. They met yesterday? Mrs. Fannin, was it yesterday? Well, in any event, they, they're meeting on a consistent basis. I don't know if Pine Hill Road or Parmenter Road is on their, or is in their crosshairs, if it is a concern, which obviously it is a concern. I would encourage you, I would strongly encourage you, you don't necessarily have to go to the committee meetings because I know everyone's got time issues, but send a note to the committee saying, "Listen, you know what? We need to have a discussion about our neighborhood and the need for sidewalks in this area." Because again, there are finite resources, there are numerous roads that require and should have sidewalks, that don't have sidewalks, but energy directed in that regard, I think, will result in, in a lot more action to date than inaction. So I would make that recommendation as well.
Thank you. And just as a follow-up question to that, I think one of the questions, and the neighbors recognize the fact that there's not unlimited resources in the town, you know, there's feasible things that can be done and things that are probably beyond the scope of what's capable based on the resources available today. But I think one of the questions that also comes to mind is, some of the actions recommended in the report are substantial. I think the question you just asked, the public works superintendent is, you know, do we have a budget basically to do regrading of roadways and easement issues and rebuilding of walls? I mean, there's substantial costs involved in these projects. The question then becomes again on the sequencing of steps. And again, the engineering firm just explained the three-way stop, but I think from a layman's perspective, not understanding all the traffic concerns, three-way stop is a relatively inexpensive operation in comparison to some very extensive projects that we're talking on a permanent basis. So we really appreciate the time to get a better understanding and insight to where this project is going and the commitment that you've made to the residents to kind of keep this on the radar, because, you know, the concerns are there. I think the residents share the same concerns as the selectmen do. We don't want to see another tragic accident in the area, particularly if it involves one of our family members or somebody that, you know, is close to us in that regard. So we want to kind of keep the fire burning, I guess, underneath, underneath the issue in that respect. One thing, Mr. Chairman, I'd ask is, you know, there's a number of our residents and friends and neighbors that live in the area that are in the audience with us tonight, and I don't want to necessarily speak on behalf of all of them. We've kind of given you some insight to the concerns, but I think if you can do so, give them an opportunity if they're interested to speak on them.
Yes, I'm not going to, I'm not going to prohibit anybody from wanting to grab the microphone and see themselves on television or ask some questions. That's not, that's not the, the manner in which we operate here. But I do think, and I will say this, that I think on behalf of the residents, you've made a very good comprehensive presentation. I think you've, you've hit all the highlights, to the extent that there are individual issues that people want to address that took time out here to come here this evening. I certainly encourage them. But again, you have this board's commitment that this is not going to be an agenda item and then just filed away in a dusty book and not to be discussed again. It's on, as every road is, it's on the top of our, our interest or agenda items to, for continual discussion. But with this caveat, to the extent that you are very much intently committed to getting a sidewalk in this neighborhood, there is right now an avenue for, or forum for you to begin that discussion, and I would strongly encourage you to get on that list. Because again, the number of town, the number of roads in town and the number of people who want sidewalks are, you need to get on that list, and that's how you get on that list. So with that said, to the extent that there's anyone here that would like to go beyond what was, was said and add anything that hasn't been discussed, you're more than welcome to, to either speak now or reach out to us individually. If anything else, we, if nothing else, we're accessible, either through email or phone. Or if you want to speak right now, like I said, to have your, hopefully this is not your 15 minutes of fame, but to the extent you want to speak, you're certainly encouraged and welcome to do so now. Not seeing any takers.
I have one more, John.
Mr. Semino?
Karen, is there a budgetary constraint on these recommendations? It's just a yes or no. And if the answer's yes, we'll take it up later, but, but just give me a yes or no on that.
No.
Okay, let's go.
Can I say one thing?
Sure. You need a microphone, though. If you didn't hear the initial instructions, you need a microphone.
I just want to clarify that to just put up the stop signs, we still would have to do all the other work anyway. So I just want to, because some people were like, "Oh, it would be cheaper just to do the stop signs." We'd still have to do all the same intersection work, so I just want to make sure everyone understands.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the recommendations are going to go quite a long way. I'm very familiar with the intersection. I think, you know, you could extend the logic of stop signs are easy to every intersection in town. Let's just put a stop sign everywhere you stop. Well, you can't really do that. I'm ready to make a motion, but let's, let's hear from Lisa Tominy.
Lisa Tominy, 105 Pine Hill Road.
I'm sorry, again?
Lisa Tominy, 105 Pine Hill Road as well.
Welcome.
Thank you. Just a logistical question, because the neighbor on whose property this stone wall exists is away. His wife is having surgery out of state, which is why he can't be here. And I know John didn't want to speak for him, but from a logistical perspective, I, we've had, I've had extensive conversations with both him and his son. They have had the stone wall photographed. They are not what I would characterize as wildly in favor of having it moved, part of their property taken, or anything like that. So if they, and they've hired an attorney. So if they are going to oppose that move, how does that change the timing of the safety measures being put in place?
That's, that's, that's an excellent question. We're certainly not going to go out and do it undercover of night. I guess I would ask Ms. Galligan in terms of the timing. Ultimately, the objective is to work with the individual resident and homeowner to come to some compromise or understanding. Now that he's gotten an attorney involved, that may be more difficult. Now that he's gotten an attorney involved, that may be more difficult than normal, but I'll ask Ms. Gallagher to address the best way that she's encountered and dealt with that in the past.
As far as that goes, because we have talked to him, and I know he's not 100% in favor, but he understands the issues, we'll end up negotiating with him to some degree, and then hopefully for town meeting, if we can't get something together for town meeting, we can still do all the regrading, we can still pull down the, we still pull down the shoulder, you know, but we won't be able to really touch the stone wall, so it'll still be a little high right there for a while until we can get it adjusted. But, so, a lot of times, if we have an agreement, we don't have to wait till town meeting, so it doesn't mean it would have to wait a whole nother year, as much as, once he's agreed and every, and it's selectmen, we can do sometimes a warrant article that says, "We agree to let you negotiate for that." And then, at that point, once it's negotiated, it's through. So, it shouldn't, it's still, I believe we'd be able to come to an agreement with the, with the gentleman, he, I mean, he did seem open to it, not lovingly open to it, but open to it.
Did that answer your question?
Just one, one more question, Karen, while you're still there, just the timing of it in general, just so the residents or the road know, I know the trees are scheduled for the tree hearing, is that the last phase of the recommendations that you're implementing for this year before the snow settles in?
We'll be able to take the trees down this year, but then, yeah, we would end up having to wait at that point. We could probably grind the stumps if we can get the stump guy in, but other than that, then we would have to wait.
Thank you.
Again, now, with hesitation, as not seeing anyone else rising to address us, I wanna thank you all for coming out, I'm sure you had nothing better to do on a, on a Tuesday night in November, but welcome to our world, and encourage you to visit and attend as often as you like, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Do we, we have, we need a vote, or we just, no?
No.
Okay.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Well done.
He's great, freshman in college, doing awesome. All right, we back. Next item, public comment, seeing that the majority, if not the entirety, of the public has left, I assume that there's no additional comment. Mr. Purple?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just two quick items, received in the mail yesterday, a notice that from the governor's office, that the town has been awarded a Sustainable Materials Recovery Program grant, which will give us access to a mass DEP-funded program for the transportation and recycling of residential mattresses. And I believe this is something, and Karen can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was something the Green Communities, for the filing of the grant for sustainable, for the mattresses?
No, we did, CPW just did it.
Okay.
It didn't have to be the Green Communities.
All right, so Green Community is very happy about it, but thanks to Karen for, for the work that she did on this and getting that, and getting that filed. The only other item I wanna mention is the, the Newtown website is up and running. And again, I just wanna give thanks to all the departments for the work that they put in to get everything as, as right as they could in the transfer of information. I think that specifically, you know, to name names, Brian Ballantyne, Vanessa Hale, and especially Michelle Jenkins have done yeoman's work to ensure that this has come out as, as well as it has. I will not say that it is perfect, I will say that it is a huge improvement, and I will say that departments are getting their feet under them in terms of putting up minutes, making improvements, adding information, and I think that it is going to, you know, go a long way in improving that interaction between the residents and their government.
Yeah, let me just say this, and again, do not take this the wrong way, the website had nowhere to go but up, but it's gone up in multiples, and I think we all have looked at the new iteration, and we understand that it's a work in progress, but it's a tremendous, it's a tremendous amount of progress in a short amount of time, and I, and I highly commend everybody involved in that, that's what I wanted to say. Mr. Semino?
Yeah, I mean, it nowhere to go but up, but there's a lot of different ways it could've gone up, and I think they've done very, very well picking the right way.
Yes, is that it, Mr. Purple?
I have something to say.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Faniff.
I accomplished my goal for 2015, I suggested we improve the website for the town hall, and I can actually navigate it now, thank you.
So you get your computer fixed?
No, I don't have an email either.
Is that it?
That is it.
Consent agenda, first seven minutes, I cannot move nor vote since I was not here.
All right, well, I'll move that we approve, let's take them, then, to take that one separately, let's motion to approve the minutes from November 3, 2015.
Second.
John, you gonna call that vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Upstein.
I'll motion, I make a motion, we approve consent agenda items two, three, four, five, and six as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Actually, just one question, what's the cost for the sign on South Union School Building?
It's kind of ironic, because the letter indicates the cost is built into the budget they already have, which led me to think, why are they asking? Why just buy the sign, they were already approved to buy?
They're putting, they're putting it up on a public building, you have control of the buildings.
Fair enough.
So.
To answer your question, Brian, I don't know.
CPC funds, I believe.
It's in the budget.
Okay.
Yeah, before we vote, let me just acknowledge and thank the New England Center for Children for their continuous generosity, total of $52,036 for their payment in lieu of taxes, they're a tremendous partner and asset to the town, and I just wanted to thank them in that regard.
And that's their first half payment?
Yes, that's correct, that's just a half of their payment.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Other matters properly before the board, I have nothing. With that, we would be entering to executive session, as the board, as I declare pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30, Large A, Section 21, we will not be returning to open session. The issue to be discussed is to consider the negotiation and slash or purchase of real property with respect to a future public safety complex, which falls under Exemption Six under Chapter 38, requires a roll call vote, Rooney, aye.
Semino, aye.
Faniff, aye.
Shea, aye.
We are in executive session.